This is our second Regional Information Center Town Hall. Today, we're focusing on business. I'm John Humbert with the City of Reno. We've been trying to have these virtual town halls with a number of people across the city and across the entire county to talk about the different issues that we're all facing right now in the midst of this pandemic. Today's focus, as I said before, is on business and the challenges that those businesses and also our county leaders are facing as we try to get our entire region going again. Now, we do have a number of special guests with us today across the county, elected leaders, business leaders, and business owners about how we work together to bring things forward for our entire region. We're going to start with our elected leaders who are joining us today. We've got Mayor Sheevy with the City of Reno, Mayor Ron Smith with City of Sparks, and Commission Chair Bob Lucy joining us. And Madam Mayor, we'll begin with you. Love to hear your opening thoughts.
All right. Well, thank you, John. Many of you know I'm a small business owner, so I can certainly understand, you know, the challenges that all of us have been going through. I want to say, you know, thank you for everyone's participation today. This is something we're going to have to do collectively. But I think this is an important conversation because right now, we have to start to prepare and plan for the next steps of opening our small businesses and big businesses. But certainly, I think people need clarity, and you know, this is the next phase. And what does that look like? And it might not look very traditional. I mean, if you remember in 9/11, that's in, you know, airports, we started seeing security checkpoints and things like that. So things are going to change. However, it's now time to start to prepare and plan for the next steps to get our businesses opening. So I want to just say thank you to Commissioner Bob Lucy and Mayor Ron Smith for helping us be unified in this message moving forward. It's going to be a great discussion. Thank you so much.
Yeah, fantastic, Mayor. We'll go to Mayor Smith. How are you doing today?
Thanks for having me here today. I want to thank the City of Reno for hosting this week's Town Hall. Thank you, Mayor. Also, I want to thank Washoe County, all of those working behind the scenes to make these town halls happen. It's so important to answer the important questions the community has concerning so many issues surrounding COVID-19. We are so thankful for each and every business in our region, and I'm looking forward to delving into the questions the community has. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mayor. We'll go to Chair Lucy next.
Hey, good afternoon, John. Thank you so much again for having us participate this. And obviously, Mayor Sheevy and Mayor Smith, it's been a great opportunity for all of us to reach out and City of Reno for hosting this week's Teletown Hall. I think one of the things for me as Mayor Sheevy, I also am a small business owner here, and when we write policy and direct policy from the county standpoint, a lot of that comes from my experience as a small business owner. So it greatly concerns me and how we've been dealing with this and how we continue to service our small business owners. And then also, as the chairman of the RSCBA and as a part of that, you know, our tourism industry has been hit hard at the RSCBA, and we're going to do work together with all three entities to figure out ways to help for the rolling reentry for our tourism industry so it won't be as impacted in the future months to come. I also want to thank the Reno Sparks Chamber, EDON, Small Business Administration for participating today. I think their input to these types of seminars and information will be great, and so I look forward to the discussion today. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks so much for being here. Now, one of the great things that we've been having for these town halls are questions directly from you. We've been setting up our website, covid19washoe.com, and we've had a number of questions come in all week. We've had over 300 questions from the community about everything, about healthcare, about businesses, and about what happens next for our community. So we've gone through a number of those questions and paired them up with the different experts that we have. And let's do a little bit of a roll call of some of the folks that we have from across the county today. We have Arlo Stockham, the City Assistant Manager and Director of Community Development. We have Doug Thornley, the Assistant City Manager of Sparks, Dave Salaro, who's Silver with the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce, Mike Kesmierski with EDON, and Rod Jorgensen from the Nevada Small Business Center. So you get a sense that we're going to hear from a lot of different perspectives about where we go from here, both what different businesses and groups can do, but also how elected leaders can help do this and what we and government can do to try to help our entire region. So let's jump up into the questions here. So we've got a number of directives that have come down from the governor's office and from our elected leaders about what businesses are supposed to do right now and what the rules are for closures. So Mayor Smith, we're going to start with you on this. And what do businesses need to do and what have they been doing in order to try to slow the spread?
Well, first, I just want to say how much I appreciate every single business in Sparks and throughout our region. They're all so important to us. We know that the COVID-19 novel coronavirus is very contagious, and especially at the start of this summer, no one was immune. Anyway, I'm sorry, anyone has a potential contract to virus simply by touching shared items or being near someone that is coughing or sneezing. To help slow the spread of the virus, we follow the governor's directive to require nonessential businesses closed. As sad as I am that we had to close down nonessential businesses and put restrictions on essential businesses, we can see that this has helped to slow the spread simply by restricting where large crowds of people may gather and touch common features. Many essential businesses rely on employees to work from home, as is the city. We are confident that all of these efforts that have been vital in slowing down the spread and flattening the curve. Again, I just wanted to give a heartfelt thank you to all of our businesses, and I hope we can get you back to normal or what may be the new normal very soon.
Great, thanks so much. We're going to go to Anne Silver now with the chamber on this. You've probably had a lot of feedback from the different businesses, but how are you hearing from them about the importance of some of these rules to slow this spread of the pandemic?
Well, thank you, and thank you for inviting me to this call. Can you hear me?
Yeah, absolutely.
If you can. We're hearing from hundreds and hundreds of our members every day. They understand the governor's directive. They appreciate the differentiation between essential and nonessential. But I would say that our nonessential businesses deserve a chance to find a way within all the CDC guidelines and protocols to be able to do curbside delivery and pickup so that they may contribute to the flow of commerce and jumpstart what is right now a dying economy. We don't want to see that happen. We know that small businesses are the grit and the fabric of our community. We rely on them so much for daily purchases. And while the big box stores are open and running, if we can find a way to get hundreds and hundreds of businesses back into commerce, that's what we're trying to do.
Very nice. We'll go to Dave Salaro with the county. And Dave, having such a wide area to deal with from the northern side of the border all the way down to the border with Carson City and Douglas, how are the challenges of the size and magnitude of what you're dealing with at the county for these different closures?
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me on this morning. I think one of the things that we're seeing within the county, you know, we all live in the same kind of rough area. We do have some outlying areas that, you know, it's very difficult when you have people coming into those other areas. Incline is a great example, Gerlach, those are some examples pretty far out there. Business needs to occur in those areas as well. One of the things we're seeing is an example just across the board, you know, the limits on business have slowed down some of those unnecessary trips that we all make, you know, in our daily business. For example, buying groceries, just about every grocery store is the anchor to a small mall. And how many of us before COVID-19 would go to the grocery store and while we were there would just stop into any number of any other stores that are in the mall on our way from the grocery store just because we were there and thought of something we may not need, but we wanted? That is a casual chance for contact, and by limiting those casual chances, that's what's allowed our region to slow the spread of this disease. While these closures are paying for those businesses and the employees, you know, it's also our opportunity to come together as a community and be individually responsible with our personal actions to help others throughout. And so I think that's one of the things that we're starting to really see is that personal responsibility of our own actions as it comes to frequenting businesses and doing our part.
Gotcha. And we know in other cities, states, and counties, there've been some issues with folks who aren't taking things as seriously as maybe we are here in Washoe County. We're going to go to Doug next. And the follow-up to that is there have been a number of conversations about fines, penalties, and different restrictions that businesses are facing if they don't follow through with the governor's orders and with local orders. Can you walk me through a little bit about what those fines and penalties are and what people can face with enforcement if they don't abide by these important safety measures?
Of course. Good afternoon, John. You know, I want to start by saying that despite the difficult circumstances, the business community has been incredible. I'm not aware of any fines or penalties that have been meted out to garner compliance with the governor's orders across any of our jurisdictions. In general, a visit from code enforcement or a letter gets the trick done. But emergency directives do carry the force of law with them, and we have the obligation to enforce those directives, and the business community has an obligation to comply with them. So penalties can include administrative citations, administrative fines, revocation of licenses, and of course, it is a misdemeanor to illegally operate a business. Because the directives are subject to revision, flexibility, common sense, that's kind of the name of the game right now. We've taken a regional approach to how we're going to regulate these businesses during this temporary hiccup, and, you know, the rules are the same across the jurisdictions, and we're doing our best to keep the Business Operations Guide updated as those directives change.
Yeah, and I guess that's the follow-up too, that early on with different cities and the state having different rules and restrictions on things, how helpful has it been to have one common answer to these sorts of questions? Because we've been getting them at the city, and I'm sure you guys have as well, to have that single unified message.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's wonderful to have regional partners where we have a single document that we can point to, and we don't have kind of the finger pointing where, well, Sparks is allowing it but Reno isn't, or vice versa, or that the county is doing something else. It's very, very nice and much more streamlined to have one approach to the matter.
Yeah, great. So we're going to go back to Dave on this from the county perspective. We've had a number of changes that have happened. There've already been a couple restrictions that have changed just this week, coming down from the governor's office and locally, things related to golf courses, construction jobs, liquor delivery and pickup, and also grocery stores with social distancing. Can you walk us through some of these changes and kind of where things stand with some of these businesses?
Yeah, absolutely. So the Declaration of Emergency Directive Number 13 from Governor Sicilac includes quite a few changes that are important for our residents and business owners to know about. First and foremost, one of the bigger changes that we'll see on a regional basis is that golf courses, tennis, basketball, volleyball, bocce ball, handball, pickleball courts, skate parks, and horseshoe pits are all now closed throughout all of our regional parks and our neighborhood parks. And that's very important because we had people congregating in those areas. Also, showrooms for the display of furniture, home furnishings, appliances, and autos are also closed to the public. Those businesses can still stealth sell those goods, but they've got to, they can't show them in their showrooms. Places of worship are encouraged to not hold in-person worship services where 10 or more persons may gather. This actually includes drive-in and pop-up services. We had quite a few groups wanting to be very creative with that. Open house showings and in-person showings for real estate are now prohibited when those buildings are occupied by renters. Barber shops and beauticians, so barbers and beauticians are prohibited now from performing any in-house services to anyone outside of their own household. One of the things for our construction industry, we get a lot of calls about why are contractors still out there working? The Occupational Safety and Health Administration, OSHA, now has been identified as the group to ensure that the businesses are continuing to operation and providing adequate protections for their employees, and that includes the appropriate sanitation protocols. So you'll see them out there on job sites. One of the other items is that has been identified for necessary changes within grocery stores and other essential businesses to implement protection of not only their own employees, but the customers that come in. And again, this is an area where we as citizens that frequent these areas need to make sure that we follow those rules that are put in place by the grocery stores and some of those essential businesses that are still open.
I wanted to circle back on the liquor delivery and pickup issue. We know that we can get things from restaurants and from other groceries, get things delivered to us, but there have been kind of some unanswered questions about if you can get that picked up or if someone can bring you alcohol. How is that working right?
Yeah, so you know, one of the things I had a discussion with our district attorney's office, and they basically, you know, told me, hey, if it was illegal before, it's illegal now. So we've heard from some restaurants that want to provide to-go cups, so to speak, of mixed liquors, and that's obviously going to stay, you know, illegal. But we are starting to allow for some of those businesses that have liquor licenses or prepackaged liquor to be able to sell those and provide curbside delivery of those goods. You can't go into the establishment, but you can certainly purchase online and come to the store. They've got to still check IDs and do all those other sorts of things, but as long as they've got a packaged delivery or packaged liquor license, that is now being allowed.
What about things like breweries, folks who have kegs or growlers or things like that?
Yeah, so that as well is being allowed for kegs, those prepackaged things that are available, that those businesses were licensed to provide prior to. It's really the open container issues that are going to be kind of problematic, but we want to make sure that, you know, people can still do what they need to do and meet those guidelines. I think the big piece is any of those businesses that are open really need to make sure that they're doing the social distancing and providing for those appropriate measures.
Yeah, and it's not just the safety of folks who are coming to these establishments and buying products and going to grocery stores, but it's also safety of the employees. And I want to pivot to the City of Reno on this with Arlo Stockham and the mayor as well. So Arlo, we've got concerns, and we've heard those complaints from different employees about their own safety in some of the businesses. What are restrictions and guidance that you have for those employees and what the business owner should be doing for their employees?
Yes, thanks for having me. Dave mentioned some of them, but it's very important, these safety guidelines for grocery stores and other businesses, social distancing, we've heard about that a lot, staying six feet apart, the frequent disinfecting, masks and gloves, and just standard operating procedures that are going to be necessary in our new normal as we start to see, hopefully, businesses being allowed to reopen. We're going to have to operate a little differently and do it more safely as long as COVID is with us.
So are different types of businesses in suggested guidance to do this, different kinds of interactions that you have, should there be different restrictions for that?
Absolutely. There's special standards for the mining and construction industries and manufacturing and activities like that. But in general, for all our retail establishments, we want to see masks and gloves. We want to see markings on the floor for six foot of separation at checkout stands, contactless transactions. These types of approaches just need to be the new norm as we reopen and now while we're pretty limited, unfortunately.
Gotcha, thanks, Arlo. Moving to Mayor Sheevy, I know early on in the conversations that we had as a city and as a business owner yourself, you have pushed folks to really try their best to wear a mask or any sort of covering almost every single time they leave the house. You made a hashtag, Mayor made me do it, and you've really, really pushed on that. Have you had any pushback when it comes to those sorts of suggestions?
Well, I think now more than ever, you are starting to see people really understand the importance of that. Matter of fact, I'm getting a lot of email from people saying, I won't go into a business if they're not protecting themselves. And I think we have to give these businesses every fighting chance. And again, starting to look at what the plan is moving forward, how do we start to get people open, but at the same time, doing it safely. And whenever I talk about putting things in place, it is masks. It might be, it might look like we might do testing in all of our businesses at some point. These are things that are going to change dramatically. I have business owners that are putting in wash stations, right, whenever they enter their door. So these businesses understand what it's going to take to get open, and we're going to do it safely, and we're going to do it slowly. I also want to remind people that, you know, because some people are saying, well, you know, I thought the surge was, you know, April 24th, and people need to understand, we have done a tremendous job in our community, and the reason why we did it early on is the sooner that we did it, the sooner we can get back open. And so I want people to understand that, that the surge dates change based on social distancing and staying home. And now we want to look at that and say, what's the plan moving forward? Let's start to roll out slowly but safely. I want people to understand that safely. And when we start to do that, we have to pay attention to the data and the science and the physicians of what that looks like. So I want to commend all the businesses that have done a fantastic job, but I also want to remind people, the fear is very real on both sides. Whether you have a business owner that can't put food on the table, or you have an elderly person or someone who's at high risk that is in fear of getting this virus, those are very, very real fears to people. And so on both sides, we need everyone to come together and support each other, but do all they can to wear a mask or protective, you know, gear. But at the same time too, I think, I've been talking to a lot of physicians, you have to be careful about gloves because now they're saying with gloves that people might wear them eight hours a day, touch their face, and it's better to really constantly wash your hands, wash your hands. And we start, we could become a society where we're saying to each other, hey, have you washed your hands? And maybe we start that culture of asking people, hey, have you washed your hands? It's really important. But those are the things that we need to be doing in our community to show people that we care. Wear a mask. It's not that difficult.
Do you think there should be requirements for that though on businesses and people? Should we be making folks do this?
I do. I think absolutely we should wear a mask because I think that people will be much more comfortable to, you know, to patronize these businesses if you're wearing a mask, if you're going above and beyond, and you're putting hand washing stations or sanitizers. And like I said, the next rollout that we're really talking about, not just in Reno, but across the country, is looking at eventually probably end up testing your employees, you know? So there are different parameters that are going to be put in place. I think anything you can do to minimize the spread is absolutely important, but this is the time to start planning, preparing, what does this process look like to get our businesses open so people can be ready, so people can have those masks, things like that. So let's start preparing, let's start planning, and get everyone used to this. But at the same time, I want to stress, this is really important, there are some people in the population, like our elderly population, those suffering from underlying health conditions, that are going to have a harder time getting back into society because they are at higher risk, and we need to protect them as well. So we have to be respectful as an entire community, do this together, and have kindness and compassion for one another.
Absolutely. I guess the challenge for me, and we're going to pivot over to Anne Silver with the chamber, is that we do want to have these restrictions in place, we do want to have these suggestions, but Anne, there's a PPE shortage out there, and you've got states bidding against each other four or five times the price out there on the open market. But as business owners, what is that sort of burden that you've got to face out there in the free market?
Well, I think we've always thought it and thought of it as a burden when you require employees to do just about anything, but there are many masks that can be easily made out of undershirts and all sorts of fabrics. And I think we have to get a little more creative and a little less resistant, and to Mayor Sheevy's point, you know, figure out what the new normal is going to be and get yourself a mask, whether they're not available on Amazon or they can be sewn together by hand, that will be what is required. We will begin to look askance at people who do not have masks on. And so I think, to the mayor's point, we have to be ready to all be wearing masks, to see employees wearing masks, customers wearing masks, and that itself, in itself, will demonstrate our commitment to being safe, not only preventing the spread, but of showing that we're committed to the future of what life may be. It may be one where we're all very suspicious of who may be a spreader or a carrier, and we're going to want to know that if we're doing business with someone, that individual has a mask and is, as the mayor said, compassionate and respectful for all the others around them.
What was interesting in that is that you said that there has now been almost kind of judging folks who aren't doing this. Tell me about the evolution from resistance at the beginning of having restrictions to now almost acceptance of them and demanding it of themselves. That's quite a change in about a month.
Yeah, I think most of us were totally unfamiliar with people who wore masks unless we were in the hospital or with someone who was ill, and all of a sudden, they've become a fashion statement. I mean, I saw something on a Prado website about a mask you can get, and I think we're reverting back to creativity and innovativeness as we realize that masks are our first line of defense, and whether it's made out of an undershirt or you're able to procure one or you were way ahead of the curve, so to speak, and had one on hand for construction purposes, you need to have one on. Otherwise, as someone indicated before, we'll be going into grocery stores and the big box stores that are still open, and we'll be turning around and leaving when we don't see employees and other customers wearing masks.
Absolutely. Chair Lucy, your thoughts on this as well and the push and pull between business and government when it comes to access to PPE? What are you hearing from health districts and other needs that you have as a county?
You know, I think that what we've heard is that it's been really challenging. The supply chain has been stressed to, you know, get to PPE for a lot of these businesses and have that ready access. But as Mayor Sheevy and Ms. Silver pointed out, you know, if we plan for it now, we will be able to get to that well in advance of that rolling reentry whenever that directive is lifted. You know, I think businesses can get creative. There's a number of businesses out there. For example, my business is a small animal hospital. We use PPE every day, but we've now, you know, expanded that so that our front desk and our reception and everybody is adhering to that. We're testing those individuals. I think businesses now have to be, as Anne pointed out, creative. They have to find ways to protect not only themselves, but their employees as well. And if that is shields at a checkout stand, if that is restricting entry points so they have one point of entry and one point of exit after shopping, very much like they do at Home Depot or Costco right now, I think those are effective ways to manage and protect the employees if they're not able to get PPE right away. But the PPE is definitely a challenge, and I think we need to continue to look at that and see how we work together as a community. But also, we have to adhere to the CDC guidelines, what OSHA is telling us to do. A lot of those guidelines have been in place already for many years, but we're just going to have to step those up and continue to adhere to those for the months to come while we do this rolling reentry and what that looks like. You know, we still have to maintain, you know, social distancing, and we can't have businesses looking for loopholes like potentially sitting outside in an open space, that doesn't work. We've got to make sure that we're adhering to what we're preaching here because it really is for the benefit of everybody out there. And look, we have to adhere to this. It's going to be an inconvenience, but if we don't and we don't follow those guidelines, the worst case scenario is we go back to another shutdown, and that is really what people don't want to see. I think we all are here struggling to go forward and really make that, whatever that new reality is, work for all of us. So we're asking every business to try to adhere to those guidelines the best that they can.
And for those that are following those rules, they're closed down. They're furloughing employees, they're letting some go. So as businesses, their thoughts are, what do I do about fees? What do I do about taxes? And I want to talk to each of the jurisdictions on this one to see how they're tackling it. We'll start with you, Mayor Smith. What are your thoughts on what you do with fee deferrals? What are you guys doing?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
What are you guys doing as far as fee deferrals and taxes to try to help businesses during this time? Are you waiving them? Are you deferring? How are you guys approaching it?
You know, I'm going to have Doug answer that for me, so he's got his fingers on that pulse.
Not a problem. Go ahead.
You're just looking for sparks, John?
Yeah.
Okay. So in Sparks, what we're doing is, I think we're cognizant of the fact that many businesses, big or small, are struggling right now. And so what we're asking people to do is if there's a hardship, if there's a situation, give us a call. We're working with people. We're making sure that we're doing what we can to keep lights on. You know, we haven't made a decision or reached a decision point on fee deferral or waiver as it relates to business licenses, but it's important to remember that most of the flat annual fees that are associated with business licenses are relatively low. They're relative, they're not the largest component of the business license fees. Usually, it's a gross receipts issue, and so if the business is temporarily closed, that issue resolves itself. And if it's open, even if it's running at a reduced clip, the fee goes down commensurate with the amount of business they're doing.
Do you think that a number of the businesses know that they can reach out?
We've certainly been trying to put that word out. This is an example, I think, where the jurisdictions have diverged. I know Reno is handling it a little bit differently. But in general, I think every jurisdiction is doing its best to balance, you know, the governor's directives with the economic needs of the community, and I think we all take pride in. And I think we all take pride in being open-minded and flexible. And so we're looking for innovative ways always to, to keep the region moving forward.
Gotcha. So we'll go to the city on that question and to Arlo Stockham. What are the differences that the city of Reno has from the others? What are we doing differently?
Well, we also do the case-by-case consideration. But in addition, last week, Mayor Shivi and the city council did do a more formal extension and reduction of fees. So in the city of Reno, if you've been impacted by the closures in part or in whole, your business license fees will not be due until 90 days after the termination of the closure order. And in addition, those components of businesses that have had, have had to close will have prorated fees, so they're not paying a fee for that period when they weren't open. So that's, we've sent a lot of very positive feedback to that. It's, it's not going to make or break a business, but it helps. So we're doing what we can to help our businesses get through this.
We had a question from the public about tourism. We know how important that is for the lifeblood of our area and our region. And I wanted to talk to Edon Spinekazmierski about this and also Chair Lucy from the RSCBA perspective. What are you hearing from a regional development perspective about what we do for gaming and hotels and how we get that back open?
Well, RSCBA obviously is the lead on our tourism and Commissioner Lucy will be able to talk to that. I can tell you that because our economy has diversified, we really are being impacted much less in other communities. While tourism is down and certainly gaming is down, we are still seeing a lot of activity in our other sectors. So I think the gaming and tourism community will come back quicker here than in other places because of all the diversity we have and because of the local support they'll get when they do come online. As far as the tourism piece, Commissioner Lucy, the ball is yours.
You know, John, you know, like Mike said, I mean, we're very lucky here in Northern Nevada to be diversified. I think both Mayor Shivi and Mayor Smith have done a tremendous job within their cities to help businesses diversify and bring in a number of new businesses. But tourism remains a huge driving economic factor of our landscape here. And so when we talk about gaming and bringing gaming back on, it's had a tremendous hit. You know, we are not collecting from, most of our major properties are shut down, are not collecting any room tax from those individuals. And so as we move through, the RSCBA is moving through this recovery phase. And as we look at the recovery phase, we're working with meeting planners to, to focus on down the road what that looks like and how we can get those properties back on and work within Nevada Resort Association, the Governor's Office, and different entities to, to work on those plans. But right now, as we're still in the midst of this health, this health crisis, you know, it's not the time to start marketing for people to come to the area. You know, we pride ourselves on being an outdoor recreation community. But right now, this is not the time to travel to Northern Nevada. Right now, this is the time to really take this seriously and really try to flatten the curve and stay home. I mean, that's, I mean, we keep saying it, stay home for Nevada, but stay home and you're, and you're, you're where you're at because it's, we will be open soon and we're working towards that recovery. You know, the immediate action is going to be based upon when we open up and what that rolling reentry looks like and how we make sure that patrons that are coming to enjoy the area are, are safe. We're working with the event planners and meeting planners to maybe that, that had dates and of events that were scheduled for this time, push them back to hopefully find another window that we can give them later in the year that might be advantageous for them. So we want to make sure that all of our legacy events still are functional within both of our cities. We want to make sure our properties are safe. We want to make sure that we have the adequate ability to take care of that tourism base when we're ready. And because markets, drive markets are a majority of where we get most of our business, they're largely infected right now. San Francisco, Seattle, Portland, Los Angeles, those markets that drive here are also infected. And we want to make sure that we're keeping, taking that into consideration as well. So we, we're going to target them through digital marketing when we start opening back up and curtail a message around safety and really what that looks like. But we're going to work hand in hand. I know all three entities are, are working with the properties and RSCBA is committed to making sure that when that happens, that we're ready to do that.
I'm thinking with gaming and conventions, that's people in close quarters. How do you think things need to be moving forward once we have these rolling reopens? Are we changing the way that there's designs at a blackjack or craps table or at a convention kiosk? Has there been conversation about that?
There has. I mean, and you know, obviously with the Gaming Control Board and Governor's Office and Nevada Resort Association, they're working on plans. And whether it's at a sports bar, a local sports bar where there's video poker, shutting down one poker in between and separating chairs or slot machines, shutting down every other slot machine or, you know. But I think absolutely we're going to see new norms in how we conduct gaming, at least in the interim here in our community. Convention spaces, sporting events, those are going to be challenges as well. But we're working through those with the meeting planners on how we can maintain smaller groups than 10 in smaller meeting rooms and socially isolate and get that distance to people and allow, but allow for these events to progress down the road and what that looks like. But once again, we're in that planning stage and we're working with all the properties to develop that plan when this rolling reentry occurs.
Gotcha. I want to focus on small business now. You know, we hear it's the economic lifeblood, the true engine of our community and for so many around the country. And I want to go back to Ann on this. What are some of the resources that small businesses have and can have access to right now to, to float them through this pandemic?
Well, John, initially, I think small businesses were very buoyed by the fact that there were federal funding programs, the SBA loan for emergency injury, disaster recovery, and the paycheck protection program. But as recently as yesterday, we were notified that those have stopped. We're dependent on bipartisan support in Congress to allocate another $250 billion so that small businesses can apply for these loans. If they're able to retain employees because they're essential businesses and they're open, they need that paycheck protection program. So we're looking at another huge bundle of money that has to be appropriated so that small businesses that weren't in the queue did not get their applications in or maybe they were capped out based on the, the funds that were drying up. We need that to happen so that small businesses have every opportunity to apply for the funding that is available and needs to become available for them to continue on.
Do you have a sense from the feds and the other folks who have been running this that, that we know how much is still out there to be had? That if you've applied, you know that you're accepted or not? Has there been transparency about that?
Yeah, I, I have to give credit to the U.S. Chamber of Commerce and many of our, our two senators and Congressman Amadee here in the North have been incredibly transparent in keeping the chamber informed about where funding stands. I mean, Congress is at an impasse. They're looking at whether the Constitution will allow them to vote by proxy during their recess. They need to allocate another $250 billion at least for the disaster recovery program for small business as well as the paycheck protection program. I don't think anybody's hiding the fact that it's been a cumbersome application process. The Small Business Administration has been great about providing updates, but small businesses have to get in the queue. And right now, with the money dried up, if you are in the queue, they'll be taken on a, on a case-by-case basis and will wait for that reallocation of money. I, I think it's great that the money is available or was available. We know we'll need much more to be distributed for our small business community.
Gotcha. So I want to ask Rod Jorgensen about that. You're with the Small Business Center. Have you been having those same sort of experiences?
Yeah, it was yesterday, I, I thought the world had ended because the PPP was out of money. They were not taking any more idle EIDL, Economic Injury Disaster Loan applications. It will reopen next week sometime, I'm sure, with the $250. The big question is, is how fast do we go through the $250, $250 billion? And what's after that? Because there'll probably have to be another one after that. At least one more after the $250. The reason I believe that the disaster loan site is shut down right now, and they call it temporary, and that temporary term was confusing me. But what I realized is, as part of the disaster loan application, there's the ability to request the up to $10,000 advance, $1,000 per employee. Well, that one, that $10,000 was part of the CARES package. So the CARES package is extended, at least the $349 billion for this, this program. Thus, it looks like they, they needed to shut it down temporarily until we can see if part of that $250 is used for the advance again. Then they'll probably reopen it. In the interim, it gives the SBA an opportunity to kind of catch up on this tremendous backlog that they've got. We've not had a disaster like this that was nationwide. They're just, they're just knee-deep in alligators right now.
Do you think that there are other options and ideas that have been talked about? Something that's maybe a little outside the box that you want to see happen?
From a federal perspective, the PPP and the advance program, having been brand-new programs and having seen the challenges with writing regulations for two brand-new programs that nobody had ever seen before, I would hope that we can keep it at the ones we have right now and just keep funding those.
Gotcha. I, I want to pivot to the special guests that we have who are in the business community. We've got two of them today. And first, we've got Ten Tor Distillery, right there in the heart of downtown. Now, distilleries, of course, have faced very special challenges here because of the differing alcohol and liquor rules that we've seen. And so I wanted to bring in Melissa Tent on this. And while there has been food service and some of that's been shut down, you guys are in this sort of unique middle ground on this. What's been your experience so far? I don't think we're having some issues there with Melissa. Can we get your sound? We're trying to unmute you here on our side. All right, well, uh, looks like we're going to move on to our other guest. We'll come back to you here in a second, Melissa. So we've got Chujue Guzieras. And you're food first, pure and simple. So we've got the delivery, we've got the pickup. What's been your experience with having to deal with this and still remaining as busy as you can be?
First of all, thank you for, thanks for putting all these things together for us because that's where our community needs, needs some more information. How are we going to go by it? In my experience since all these things happened, it was a disaster, you know, for us because we had to change everything. You know, we have to go from, you know, from our first side to, to our pickup orders, you know? And then, you know, we are practicing all the hygiene with, wearing masks and gloves. And, you know, we always, we always try to, to practice those hygiene no matter what, you know? But right now, we're, we're going through a lot of changes with training, you know, so we can be ready for, you know, what's coming up. And with a shortage of rubber gloves and masks, it's been an issue.
Where are you going to try to get some of these supplies? How are you trying to make sure that you've got those masks and gloves?
Well, right now, we're, you know, there is a lot of great people up there. They're making a custom-built mask and, and, and that's what we're, that you're providing to our employees. So now myself, we just try to do the best, you know, so we can, we can have the best for our customers with safety.
Gotcha. Has there been much resistance in the community? We talked about this earlier, from other business owners that you speak with about how this is all adapted and, and folks finally getting on board with this?
Well, no, not, not, you know, every restaurant in, in France that I have been in the community, we are all in, in the same thing. We all want the best, the best for our customers here in, and not just in Reno, e-everybody.
Gotcha. Very good. So we're still trying to get Melissa back on this, but we'll go to the elected leaders to, to kind of send us home on this. I wanted to start with Chair Lucy and where we go from here and, and what you'd like to see from a county perspective about rolling out these businesses and how we do that. Chair Lucy, is there?
There we go. Hi, John. Yeah, you know, I think at the county, we're, we're anticipating this rolling reentry to be as cautious as possible. And we really want to make sure that we've taken care of businesses going forward. You know, it's been inspiring to see how the local businesses, you know, I love going to Midtown, it's one of my favorite places to go. It's got some of the best restaurants. Chuy's done a phenomenal job. But there's other businesses down there that are doing great things. You know, Reno Aspire Fitness is one of those that is offering online classes for adults and kids right now to kind of keep them safe at home. You know, Old Granite Street Eatery has teamed up with local business Rue Bourbon to provide a, turn the restaurant into a pantry for individuals to come and get food. And so as we move forward through this process, we just have to kind of be conscientious of what that rollout looks like. You know, the counties, as we've heard, the county is also taking very much the same position as the city of Reno and city of Sparks, or we're not going to charge late fees on many of our business licenses. We're going to help out with liquor licenses and gaming licenses in regards to delaying any penalty fees that they may incur during this period of time. And we really want to make it as easy for these businesses because, look, as government, we do not want to hurt local businesses. Local businesses are the lifeblood of our community. And we want to make sure we're doing everything on our, our end to help these businesses succeed. And it's a challenging time. And as we do that, you, as you can see, local leaders are here to help businesses and make sure that you guys are successful on, on coming out of this because you really are the backbone of our community. And we want to make sure we're doing everything from our standpoint, whether it's business licensing, whatever that may be. And so that's why we want to continue to get feedback from you. Email the mayor, email myself, call Reno Direct or 311 or, or anything so that we can field those questions and help you through it. Our staff are here to take those questions and really help you ease that pain as we move back into this rolling reentry.
Great, thanks so much. Looks like we've got Melissa back on the line here from Ten Tor. Again, as a distillery, you're in a, in a kind of mid-spot here about what you can produce and how you can sell it. How has this evolution of the rules been for you?
Well, we really have been hit hard financially with not being able to have our taproom open just because it is our main source of revenue and it's like the heart of our business. We've had to lay off all of our bartenders, which was a really difficult decision because they're like family to us and they're the first face you see when you come into our establishment. And then also with distribution, all the bars and restaurants and liquor stores that normally pick up our product, they're all closed right now. And so our, like, our product is not being sold to the normal places. But as a distillery, we were able to start making hand sanitizer. And as soon as we learned that we could do that, we jumped on that as quickly as we could and pooled our resources together to make it happen as fast as possible. Obviously, the ethanol that goes into making the hand sanitizer was the easy part since we made that already. But it was a little bit more difficult to source some of the other things needed, like the bottles and other ingredients that go into it. But in a way, it's actually easier to make the hand sanitizer because we don't have to worry about how it tastes. So it's been a pretty easy transition for us to use the same equipment to make the hand sanitizer. The community response to us making this hand sanitizer has just been incredible. Our phones are ringing off the hook constantly from businesses who need the hand sanitizer in order for their operations to stay open. And we are donating what we can to hospitals, medical facilities, to the homeless shelter. We're really donating as much as we possibly can. And we're just extremely happy that we're able to use our resources to help our community.
So I want to learn how this works. So, you know, you go from different distilled spirits. How do you churn all that over into hand sanitizer?
Basically, it's the same kind of alcohol that would go into making our vodka. We're just distilling it a little bit differently. We're not making it at, like, when we distill, we make cuts and there's a certain part of the distillation product that we use to make vodka. But since it's not going to be drinkable, we don't have to worry about making those cuts. But since it's not going to be drinkable, we don't have to worry about making those cuts. And so it's just one simple distillation.
Gotcha. How much are you able to make a day or a week?
We are making hundreds and hundreds of gallons a week.
Hundreds and hundreds of gallons. How does that compare to what you normally would make for vodka?
It's pretty about the, like, about the same. We can make hundreds of gallons a week of vodka when we need to.
How surprised are you that so many businesses have been able to make that switch so quickly to a different product but still remain as busy as you can be?
I mean, just the community's response has been incredible and we are just so grateful for everything.
That's fantastic. We're going to go to Mayor Ron Smith. And Mayor, we we work together as a community, but each city and county is still a little different. I wanted to get your kind of closing thoughts on what you'd like to see for your city moving forward.
Well, you know, if I had my way, all the businesses would be open again. But we do have to follow the directives from the government health officials to safely open these businesses. My wife has a small business like the mayor and the commissioner, which she's directed, now she makes masks for everybody and takes them out to the different cancer facilities and hospitals. And that keeps her busy. But again, you know, I'm very thankful for every business in our region. To say that the COVID-19 crisis has been difficult on both essential and nonessential businesses is an understatement. You know, looking in the future, we've got hot August nights, shoulder to shoulder. We've got the rib cookoff, a half a million people out in the middle of parks, shoulder to shoulder. That's going to be tough. I don't know if we're going to be able to do that or not this year, which is a big, will take a big hit for not only income from City of Parks, but for the hotels and businesses. We hope that soon all of our businesses can open up again. For now, it's vital that businesses follow our regional updated business operations guide. And for those that are still allowed to be open, please keep your employees safe by practicing social distancing, wearing masks, cleaning and disinfecting often and washing your hands frequently. And there was a comment, I guess, from one of the ladies earlier about she's not going to go into a business where the employees aren't wearing masks and the customers aren't wearing masks. And that makes it pretty tough because customers are going to do what they're going to do. And you just keep your distance from that individual or individuals and do business with that, with that small business. That's what it's all about.
You had mentioned the different events, hot August nights and the rib cookoff. Have you been looking at delays and changing it to later in the year, weather considerations? I mean, we still want these things to go on and not cancel them entirely if we don't have to.
Yeah.
But but how do we accept some of those changes with logistics and just making sure we've got enough room for everybody?
Well, you're not going to have social distancing at the rib cookoff, that's for sure. My, I'm the director of the Nevada Veterans Memorial and our golf tournament is supposed to be next month. We just moved that till August. It's the way the world is right now. And and I think everybody's trying to move everything later in the year. And pretty soon they're going to run out of room. You got the races in September as well as the balloon races. So there's going to be some tough decisions made.
Do you think there's a way to have some of these events but still maintain social distancing like we've seen in parks and trails, that we can kind of split the difference in some of these challenges?
You know, you're talking a half a million people that show up over a week. And if you've been downtown, you see how many people are actually crowded into this spot. I can't see social distancing there, I just can't see it, unfortunately.
Gotcha. We'll move to Mayor Shivi. With those different events that we've got and the tight conditions that happen in downtown during some of these events, what's your take on how we try to get some of these events done if we can?
Yeah, I think that that's very difficult right now. We just got to be very honest and realistic about that. You know, I've been telling people, you might not like what I have to say, but I'm going to be very honest with you. That might be challenging. We might have to say, hey, it's going to be 50 people at a time. We don't know. We have to continue to look at the data. But I want to go back to a couple of things because I think we're going to wrap this up here pretty quickly. I think we need to have a broader conversation, bring more businesses to the table. That's something I would like to facilitate next week and really get on top of what the other issues are. I want to also say this, a few things we need to touch on. I don't want everyone running out thinking that they have to go buy N95 masks and those kinds of things. You can use a bandana, you can use a scarf. Bob Conrad from Mrs. Reno uses his own underwear, whatever it is. You don't need to be running out there and save that stuff for our first responders, our medical providers. That's really important. I don't want people to, you know, rush out and think they have to have this certain type of mask. It's not that hard. You can easily cover your face with something. The other thing I want to touch on, the PPP, it's going to be my next crusade. And I'm going to tell you why. And we can't slap a gift horse in the mouth for receiving those funds. However, there needs to be guidelines on the PPP because what has happened is many people applied for those funds that had not been affected. Matter of fact, some of those businesses were doing really well and received those funds because they had bigger relationships inside those banks. And we have to make sure that that funding goes to people who have been shut down, who really need that funding. A lot of the small businesses have been left out. So I'm crusading with our senators, with our congressman. Mark Amade has been fantastic to really understand the needs of small business owners. And then what happens when that runs out, right? Then what do they do? We need that to be consistent, ongoing, but have parameters so it does help the small businesses because it is going to be hard to bring people back in your business if a lot of people are on unemployment. People need to be thinking about those kinds of things as well and how that PPP works. So guidelines need to be put in place so that money goes directly, directly to the businesses that have been materially affected the most so we can keep them up and running. So and bottom line, what I would like to see, I put a task force in place with doctors. It's called COVID Response. We're going to put guidelines in place, give them to the governor. And we would like to see that rollout so that businesses can get moving and get the economy open. But again, that's going to be slowly, it's not going to flip a switch. It's going to be something that is going to be gradual. It's going to be, you know, in the yellow zone and then maybe we get to go to green. So I want people to understand that. We're going to do it slowly, thoughtfully. Businesses are going to comply because they've been doing a great job so far. But we have to be very cognizant of those people out there of high risk, our elderly population, our people with underlying health conditions. So I would like to see us move forward. We'll give the governor those recommendations through this committee. And I want all businesses at the table. We need you now more than ever. And thank you to Anne in the chamber. You've been amazing in looking at curbside commerce and those things. So we have a big vision. We have a big plan. I want the businesses to know, we've got your back, we're going to do this together. But we're also going to keep people safe, healthy and alive.
That's fantastic. Thanks so much. So thanks to you and the other elected leaders here today. We've also got all of these experts, small business owners. I'm really glad that we could bring everyone together on this and hear all different perspectives about how we band together and try to solve some of these problems. But we are not done yet. We have another virtual town hall coming up next week, next Friday at 1 o'clock. It's going to be about public safety. And again, we still want to hear from you. So you can go to covid19wacho.com, keep submitting those questions. We had over 300 just for today. And so public safety is our focus next week. So we want to hear from you. And that's also a great page to see resources, tips, tricks, all the different things that we can do as a community to stay safe, stay alive and work together. And we're really, really proud of how we've been coming together with this. Thanks again to everyone and thank you so very much for watching and sticking with us here as we work together as one region and one county to try to keep folks safe. Thanks so much.